Okay. Welcome to the regular meeting of council Tuesday, May the 3rd, 2022 at 4:40 PM. We acknowledge that the town of Kirkland Lake is located on the traditional territories of the Cree and Algonquin peoples and other indigenous peoples whose presence continue to enrich our vibrant community today. We recognize and offer our gratitude for their care and teachings and about the earth, about the earth culture. We recognize and offer our gratitude for the care and teaching of our culture. We honor those teachings through our interactions today and every day hereafter. We thank them for sharing this land with us. We commit to ongoing learnings about how our cultural identity is celebrated, represented, and honored, as well as the inclusion of indigenous perspectives through our actions. My good which, thank you. Meeting called to order and we'll have a moment of silence. Approval of the agenda?
Moved by Council La Chava, seconded by Council Eugene Ivanoff. Be it resolved that the agenda for the regular meeting of council held on May 3rd, 2022, beginning at 4:40 PM be approved as circulated.
All in favor? Approved? Declaration of pecuniary interest? Nonnoted. Posits and delegations. Item 4.1. Community Living. Do you want to make sure your microphone's on?
The green light is on.
Okay, good. Welcome.
So, hi, I'm Miss Anne Armstrong. Hello. My name is Peter Mars. Mayor Kylie and Councilor. I would like to thank you so much for allowing us to speak to you this evening. I would like to tell, we are here from Community Living Kirkland Lake to let you know some special news. As you know, we A, our, as you know, May is Community Living Month all across Ontario. But this year is extra special to us as it is our 75th anniversary. We are very proud of everything that Kirkland Lake has helped us across, on fish. It all started with a man named Don Frisbee in 1947. He saw the need to start up a school for people that needed different learning methods.
Over the years, our agency has grown to five months and as a community living program, school programs can support people through self-respect. We enjoy the feeling of being accepted in our community and would like to say Kirkland Lake for the many years support. All throughout this month, we will promote a morning community living Kirkland Lake on our Christmas Day. We are inviting everyone to like and share our community with COVIDers' instructions. We are not having a big celebration, but we are hoping that God will help us celebrate what you can do to support us for the next 75 years.
Comments, Council, Councilor Ivanov?
Thank you for coming here this afternoon. I am very proud of the people of Community Living who have done so much in our community. We see you all over town, either cutting grass, shoveling snow, just being the people you are. And, you know, the people with special needs are special to our community, probably more special than you think you are. And I want to thank you for being here. You know, we love having you here, so thank you very much.
You mentioned Mr. Don Frisbee. Some of us will remember, maybe Rick. He was started up this group here. A great man. It's nice to see this carry on for 75 years, so keep up the great work. And thank you for coming to visit us today. Oscar?
Nice to see you, Karen. Nice to see everyone. My old neighbor. I've had the pleasure of having people from Community Living work for me in the past, and I can tell you the whole time working. Thank you very much for your great work. I'm just hoping that maybe during this time, we could take this, this message, this celebration to schools. Schools are very, very important. A school talks about inclusiveness. This is something that we aspire to see happen. So I hope that some of this message is what you're doing at the age of human. And especially in schools, they should be aware of that, you understand, with all of us. Thank you for the good work.
Councilor Owen?
Thank you, worship. Yes, I believe that Kirkland Lake Community Living is the very first community living organization in Ontario. It's another thing where Kirkland Lake put out a program that was needed and the rest of the problems followed. And I think that's something that needs to be mentioned and shouldn't be forgotten. I've only lived in Kirkland Lake for 40 years. And one of the things that impressed me both Kirkland Lake is how inclusive it is. I've had many, in my job, when I was working, the bosses didn't keep too close of control over where I was or what I was doing. And I had many long coffee breaks with people like Bobby and a lot of the names are escaping me now. But if you went to Tim Hortons, you would probably find me sitting with community living people. And, and, and we really had a good time. And trust me, that doesn't happen in everything. So I think it's, it's a tribute to your program and to your clients, if that's, I'm not sure what to refer to, but I call them clients. And I think it's also a tribute to the community. So please keep being involved, keep letting us see your abilities. Let's see your abilities instead of what happens in many communities where you're always focused on the physical.
Thank you, Karen.
Moved by Council Stacy White, seconded by Council Eugene Ivanoff. Be it resolved that the delegation on behalf of Community Living Kirkland Lake be received for information.
All in favor? Motion carried. Any declaration of pecuniary interest? Nonnoted, oops, sorry. Item number five, acceptance of minutes and recommendations.
Moved by Council Patrick Adams, seconded by Council Stacy White. Be it resolved that council approve the minutes of the following meetings. Minutes of the special meeting of Committee of the whole of council held April 20th, 2022, and minutes of the regular meeting of council held April 20th, 2022.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item number six, reports of municipal officers and communications. Our review of Ontario Good Roads Conference.
Thank you, worship, to council. As councilors are aware, myself along with Jim Roman, Director of Public Works and Councilor Shavan, attended the Good Roads Conference in Toronto before 10/13. At the previous council meeting, Councilor Shaba gave a thorough overview of the conference. So my report really focuses on some of the sessions that Jim and I attended. Overall, there was a number of concurrent sessions, some of the key issues involving asset management, smart communities, and workforce and labor, that's the ones I chose to attend, given the importance of human resources and workplace development that municipalities are having, struggling with, including Kirkland Lake. Number the speakers stressed the need, municipalities to develop a talent management framework that overcomes some of the difficulties in attracting and retaining employees. What was seen to be stresses, you know, the attracting of employees is very difficult today, as we all can attest to. There's so much competition for a limited pool of labor. That's why the retaining of employees is very important. But how do you retain employees? Well, we developed, number speaker really enhanced the view that you must develop a workplace culture that helps retain these employees. In order to help with retention, employee engagement methods are important. And this is an area that I will be focusing on with our HR department later this year. Looking at what engagement methods that we can employ for our staff to help retain employees that takes a little bit of the pressure off trying to attract. So that came through quite loud and clear. A very interesting session was from the Cao of the township of Zora. And this is part of what would the, what would the workplace look like in the future? And they have actually switched to a four-day work week and found very interesting. So I'm going to be exploring that, exploring that winter this year. As far as our director of public works, he attended a number of training sessions and two of which really stood out for him. One was the session on changes to the environmental compliance approval process. And that gave the director a much better understanding of the town's pending consolidated linear ECA for sanitary and stonewall reserves. Also, the session on geo-synthetics, which introduced Jim to a number of applications where geo-synthetics may be used to enhance stability and reduce overall construction cost. So overall, the, the conference was worthwhile. I think staff learned a great deal and also, of course, I see network opportunities to go back to our operations. So overall, it was a good experience and hopefully we'll be back this year. I want to make one.
Well, Councilor Ivanov?
No, just one comment, and I think, you know, we often talk about recruitment. We don't think about retention as an important part of our employees in HR. And retention is so important that, you know, we'll go chase people all over the country trying to get somebody to fill some position. But we don't think about people we have in the position already. We lose them, they're all doing the same thing, we chase somebody who's already got skills. It is such an important part of our process of having a good community and, and, you know, so I think, you know, I think that's something we should concentrate on, not just recruitment. Obviously, Ellen feels the same way, so I'm very glad that he's, that he comes back with that. Thank you very much.
Moved by Council La Chava, seconded by Council Casey Owens. Be it resolved that report number 2022 CAO 002 entitled Ontario Good Roads Conference A Review be received.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item 4.2. Verbal report on pay equity review.
Through you, your worship to members of council. So I'm just going to review who we are with our equity. Just to recap, the May 18th, 2021 regular meeting of council. Council directed staff to procure the services of consultants to complete a pay equity compensation and job evaluation review for the entire corporation, including unionized and non-unionized positions. Now, it was released in August, the contract was awarded to Gallagher Benefit Services Group. This happened on October 15th. Now, it must be stressed that this work needs to be done in order to maintain compliance with the Pay Equity Act, which is a legislative requirement as well as part of our strategic priority identified in our strat plan 2020, 2024. So the process began in November, where employee information sessions were held three different times. And this was to let employees to learn about the process, what was involved in the pay equity process. The key steps in the process are as follows: job information collection, job evaluation, pay equity, market review, salary structure, and ongoing maintenance of, of program. The output of the results is in the form of a ladder chart for each employee group. This is a hierarchy of points reflecting the relative value of jobs. Positions are then grouped into bands, need to be of similar value, giving consideration to current banding organizational relationships and the points received in the detailed evaluation. Now, senior management has validated the branding, banding structure, and they're ready to provide the ladder charts to employees. This is where we are now in the process. We are ready to share these ladder charts with employees for review and validation. These ladder charts are specific to each employee group, for example, CP26, ONA, CP974, and non-union. Now, these ladder charts do not include names, salaries, or points obtained. They are strictly a grouping of positions into bands for paid equity purposes. As female designated job classes must pay at least the same hourly rate as a male job class in the same band. Employees will be given the opportunity to validate the banding structure based on their knowledge of certain positions in the organization. Now, each manager, and this will probably happen by end of this week or Monday, each manager will send a letter of due resources to their employees. Employees will be invited to review band placement of their position relative to other jobs in the organization that they are familiar with and may or may not have been previously aligned with. If an employee has concerns of their band placement, they'll be encouraged to refer to their job description to ensure it is inclusive of their duties and accountability. If there are noticeable or significant gaps in the information, important activities or responsibilities that the employee performs on a regular and recurring basis, for example, the employee would then discuss the band placement of their position with their manager. If the employee and manager agree there are information discrepancies, then the employee can request reconsideration with the consultant to discuss. Once the bands have been finalized, the consultants will identify inequities identified through the review and determine the financial impact, if any. Council can expect a presentation from the consultants, most likely, I'd say by the end of June, and will include the results of a pay equity review, a new pay grid for the non-union positions based on internal equity and external comparatives, and a financial impact analysis with costs associated with the implementation. So that's where we are right now with studying. And what made questions? Again, the consultants will be coming end of June to, to have a full presentation to answer regarding this topic.
Yeah, I didn't want to preempt the consultants before, so indicated that they're coming at the end of June. So after which, they probably give us a roadmap as to implementation and of course, the cost analysis is correct.
Yes, through you, Councilor, yes, they will, full analysis of financial aspects.
When would change us to?
Through you, worship. Possibly. We are looking at, we believe the financial impact regarding the equity will be minimal. And we are discussing with finance on how best to approach that. So if there's any adjustments to the market wage, that will probably take place of January 1st next year. So again, the consultants will have a plan in place on that topic.
Any other questions?
Moved by Council Eugene Ivanoff, seconded by Council Rick Owen. Be it resolved that the verbal report entitled Pay Equity Review Report be received for information.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item 6.3. 2022 operating and capital budgets to light corporate pressure.
Your worship, council. Appreciate the time you've brought me this evening. I do want to take just one minute to kind of emphasize the amount of effort and cooperation that goes through the process to get, get in here, sit in front of you today. There's probably dozens of people who spent hours and hours putting all the pieces together that are summarized here. I firstly want to thank them. I first kicked at it, so I had to rely heavily on a lot of experience and knowledge that's out here in our community. I just want to kind of emphasize that own special thank you to the people that helped me get through the process. I apologize, I'm an accountant after all, so this will probably be a little dry and I read some stuff to you and stuff like that, so apologizing in advance. The memorandum, which was circulated to you, point out a couple of things on there and follow up with a couple of other items for hitting the report line. Funds from both reserve and reserve funds this year, we're hoping are going to be used to keep the anticipated tax increase to 2%, which will include all of the capital and the operating identified in this report. Subject to force your, your process, your approval, your review of all these numbers. Just like to remind you that, you know, at correction of council, we tried to go through a budget survey, put it up on the website a little bit before the, before the actual first meeting. And attached to your, your package is the results of that survey. We would have liked to see, you know, more people participate, but certainly, you know, within the group that participate, we got an awful lot of solid responses, comments for what's important, stuff like that to them. So that's included in the package as well. Then next to is the draft capital budget for all of the departments. And I'll swing back to that a little bit later, just to have a few comments this week. I'm just going to hit a couple of points here, if you don't mind, on the operating budget. It's in the memo, but I just wanted to highlight. So, development services, it's proposing a 13% increase. This is primarily a change, we're able to actually get some people in there now, so we're not spending as much contract services who didn't know that. Corporate services, see that there's a 7% increase. This is really number getting up to our proper staff comp this year. Now, got people in place for all the positions. Municipal election expense, obviously, you have an election here, so there's some extra costs there. Releasing costs, kind of. Yeah, we don't control leasing costs, but it's a rare information. Fire services have a 11% increase. And that's primarily driven by the salaries of all the firefighters for the rest through their cost changes. Public Works is looking at a 5% decrease. And I think between that, wastewater and water, the kind of general comment is in COVID times, very hard for them to get some of these budgeted activities out there and done. Getting materials and stuff in place and everything else. So it's been kind of running a little bit slower in the past this year. Get caught up on a lot of that. I also want to note that in that budget, there is $80,000 earmarked for studies, engineering studies. To set up capital projects for the future. So that's to get the, you know, the plans in place so that when we find funds, if we start budgeting for some bigger projects, which we haven't been able to now, that we'll be ready to jump on this project. Community services, it's looking at a very small decrease. And again, that's more a reflection of COVID and just trying to get the numbers in place to understand the effects. Current here, still living under that umbrella of the whole start when it comes to budget. Tech pioneer, there's no significant change in our budget. Other charges, so if you see on the list, Ontario Works, Health Food, and social, a lot of that's under the DSAF umbrella, Health Need umbrella and impact. And those are costs we don't control, coming in around 2% increase. So we have to incorporate that into our budget. And we basically, some counselors work on those individual boards, so the, or the understanding of where the increase is. But that's, that's what this is. Just a very quick summary, just want to point out the obvious, that under COVID, it's very, very difficult trying to get some kind of comparison or some kind of a pattern that we can rely on when we're doing a budgeting. You know, the lockdowns came in at different times, since a lockdown happens, everything changes. It's not just salaries, but, you know, just, just finding somebody that come and pour some cement. For COVID conditions, it's a different world than doing it under normal conditions. So that's, that's still, I think there's an element of that still with this budget. And we'll see by the time we get to the end of the year how much of that it has. Always help in kind of, there tomorrow. Next item, or items, I guess, it's the capital schedule. You don't necessarily have to go through it, it's on page thirty two. Um, I just want to make a couple of points and observations. We're going to have, you know, meetings down the road, but we'll go through a lot of the very detailed kind of discussions around this. Um, but first, it's important to recognize that we're carrying forward two very large infrastructure projects right now, that being the wastewater project from bringing it into town. And then the extension of the K L whole of the services for their facilities. List of recommended projects, we have a breakdown of how we anticipate funding them. And that's, of course, subject to your approval and your input. It's also kind of important to recognize at this point that a lot of them have government funding recognized in in this spreadsheet. Um, but those are applications and then you're waiting to hear, and depending on what we hear, uh, we could be back here in front of you a month or two down the road saying this project didn't get funded or it got more funded. Guys just lived through an example of that with the airport project, kind of changed on the fly. So, you know, everything on this capital budget, especially in the recommended area, it's somewhat subject to that kind of a process. But I tell you though, it's, if something changes, it'll come back here for your for your review and proof. Uh, I'm going to place here. Got a couple, I just want to make an example, comment, I guess, you'll see the very first one, the elevator. So that's, that is an example, but I was just saying, we've identified that we're hoping to get sixty thousand dollars of funding. If the sixty thousand dollars is approved, we'd like to, then we will be back here to talk about whether you want to forward the project, fund it in a different way, or, you know, whatever, whatever. There's one other one right at the very bottom, the replacement generator for the water treatment plant. Both you, magnifying glass, you'll see over on the right, there's a two, which means we didn't necessarily assign as the very high priority, but but it's on the sheet right now because we have a specific funding envelope called wards, which is a, which is related to infrastructure. And they require us to identify a project to get our next level of funding. So we've identified this one, but what we what we do know is if we have to come off of this one and move it into a different project, that there's flex one that does. So, you know, it's always just a little bit odd. Um, fire truck, you'll see over on the far right or the middle of the page. It's in that column because anticipation that we're going to finance that, once we identified the fire truck. There's some some dollars in the operating budget for the fire group. Get a couple of payments in there, but we're not expecting that available right away, so all effective, that's probably. Go a couple pages further, see there's kind of a summary for for everybody, but what each of these projects, just a short, you know, one sentence kind of summary of what, why they're on the list, little description. Again, when we we swing back to this, I guess, um, be able to dig into this like comments. For now, this is just for information purposes. In that funding, you'll see on that spreadsheet, there's a column there about reserves and reserve funds. You guys have all been on council long enough to have a, you know, an understanding of what that kind of means. Um, there's also an appendix, appendix number four, page forty seven, which gives a summary of what we have in the reserves and reserve funds, and what we call obligatory reserve funds, which is money that's been owed to us that we haven't spent yet, and that's related to tax, tax, and post. That's going to be part of the conversation as well, of how how we fund the capital and some other things that are on that. Just wanted to point it out, that you see part of the budget presentations draw down the reserves at ten, and that's what we're talking about. So, in summary, just a reminder, budget's kind of built around a two percent increase overall taxation. See on page, uh, thirty, within the package, there's a little summary, there's the the overall deficit, some of the other funding sources that we have. The unfunded capitals, the way I characterize it, that's, you know, your decision, maybe you can decide what that number ends up at. We're capital projects that don't have specific dollars identified that were, theory may come from taxation or risk there. Should counsel wish to discuss something specific related to staffing, I just want to remind you, we'll probably have to go in camera. It's that kind of place. I'm going to send you all an email, probably this evening, but could be tomorrow morning, with my contact information. Um, it's entirely up to you, because I'm new to this process. So when you ask me a question, I may not have an answer right away, so if you have some questions that you'd like to kind of give to me in advance, I'd be, we'll dig in and find answers if necessary. I'd be happy to take your emails or phone calls or whatever, so that I can accumulate them and start working on them. About me and Josh, who definitely can tell. Anyways, we'll, we'll be digging around, we'll try to find the answers for you, if I can. So it's entirely up to you, if you want to wait for the news, that's fine as well, but I think this way, given how new I am to the position, how I have to poke around, we've had so much turnover here. There's a lot of institutional college that's kind of gone now. Some of the old projects that you might want to talk about, I don't necessarily know about. Again, I'll send it out to to counsel and worship. Sorry, um, you're in, your worship, we'd like to set up a couple of special council meetings. And this is a housekeeping thing, from my understanding that we have to kind of, for your deliberation, that would be page twelve, four forty, uh, May twenty fifth, or twenty sixth, four forty. And, you know, and the things depending on how a lot, along these deliberations take, possibly two, first and second. I think that that's basically everything I wanted to kind of hit this evening. If you would like to ask questions for the process in particular, be very happy to answer this.
Monsieur Chaba?
Thank you very much, Lloyd, for that presentation. I'm going to keep all of my questions till Thursday, but I just, one ask is that, for the benefit of that you have some of this, uh, laptop, to bring their laptop, they are looking at it, can we, well, future say, have all this thing display on this, that all of us? That would be, uh, it would be somewhat known that it was happening, a lot of numbers that I see on my screen. I appreciate we have the thing to put into it, maybe the next time we'll have it all display on the screen. Uh, sometimes too, we, I see, you think we're all going back and forth, back and forth, trying to catch those numbers. So if we can have it displayed on the screen, that really appreciates, uh, for our benefit and also.
Perhaps we'll bring a couple of copies, just maybe somebody who would prefer to wake up, work out the paper, we'll come prepared for that.
Counselor Owens, this is a procedure question as well, since we're, it's in last year, we're about to go lame duck. Um, so we passed the budget, there's some pretty big ticket items on there, but once, not exactly sure when the lame duck period can start, are you still purchasing things, or is this what happens?
Through your worship, Counselor Owens. I got it right this time. Um, yes, uh, nomination, it doesn't impact, uh, lame duck period because we, uh, the whole of council passed a delegation by law to allow, uh, for the C A O to have these, uh, abilities wherein it would be approved to the council. So for example, the elevator, if their funding wasn't going to come to fruition, it would come back to council, and if it was council's will to go ahead with the hundred ninety thousand dollar purchase, then if it's during a lame duck period, the C A O would have the delegated authority to enter into that track that.
Okay, so the projects don't all stop.
And it's, it's, it's for restricted access, they're very specific, so I'd have to review the municipal act to identify the specific acts.
So Lloyd, your expectation has progressed, we'll look at this and back Thursday, ask tough questions.
Yeah, Thursday, I I kind of, I think we all kind of settled on the staff side, we're hoping to get the capital. Deal with the capital, it seems to have been the biggest, the biggest discussion once last year and the year before. So maybe I'm being a little bit too rosy about it, but, you know, capital is kind of my focus when it shows up on Thursday, so if you guys come with that kind of thinking, uh, once the capital's decided, then we can get into the, that you start working on some final decisions of tax rates and stuff like that, this is an estimate at this point. And once you kind of, you know, made your, made your wishes clear, then you can start kind of cleaning up, getting to quite more closer to final stage. If the capital doesn't take very long, we can start on operating Thursday as well. Your tolerance for sitting with the account.
Counselor Adams?
Yes, I just want to say, after, uh, three years of, uh, doing this budget process, this is the first time it has come back straight off the bat at two percent, uh, instead of being presented at significant numbers, and I'm the bad guy with my pencil and going through anything that's budgeted as the levy. So this is a great way to, uh, finally bring this forward, a great way for relationship building between council and staff. And what a great start, this is, uh, well done by all members of staff who have worked on this, and this, this truly means a lot after, uh, three years. This is well done to everybody, thank you very much for this, uh, head start on this budget year.
I echo the same, uh, comments, uh, Counselor Adams. Looking at, uh, conditionally, a two percent increase is, uh, quite remarkable considering inflation's running six, seven percent. I know in some discussions with, uh, Alan, that, uh, when it first came down the chute, it was looking at ten, then four, and two, so, uh, congratulations, it was not particularly real tough, but look at the, uh, the numbers and, uh, I think, uh, we've got a real good budget to work with here. Finalize the next week or two. Thank you, uh, like.
But emphasize again that, you know, that two percent number, I rely heavily on the the experience that is sitting around the table here, and I'm everywhere in town, they're the ones who've been through the process before.
In your worship, I just wanted to address through you to all of council, if council wants to stick around after the, uh, the meeting to decide on, uh, the call of, uh, special meetings in terms of deliberation, future deliberations, uh, that those couple of dates that, uh, the treasurer has identified, just to get the availability of all of council factor there's formed, so before, that's was my comment before I read the recommendation. Uh, moved by Counselor Casey Owens, seconded by Counselor Chaba. Be it resolved that memorandum number twenty twenty two, ten zero zero six, entitled Twenty Twenty Two Operating and Capital Budget be received, and that deliberations regarding the Twenty Twenty Two Operating and Capital Budget commence on Thursday, May fifth, twenty twenty two. And finally, that Counselor Ivanoff be appointed chairperson for the Twenty Twenty Two Capital and Operating Budget Deliberation Meetings.
All in favor? Motion carried. Thank you, Lloyd. Uh, consideration of notices of motion, item seven point one. Counselor, right?
Thank you, through you, sir. Do we have a secondaire on this motion, so that I can speak on behalf of this motion?
I had identified Counselor Casey Owens.
Oh, perfect, thank you. Um, so I'm seeking support in, um, sorry, today, uh, to continue to lobby the higher levels of government on the behalf of small and rural municipalities. Um, all of us are basically staring down the barrel of millions and millions of dollars of deficit for our infrastructure. So this one here specifically addresses bridge and culvert replacements in rural municipalities. So this one was started at a different municipality, and we just want to throw our support behind that, if it pleases the gentlemen surrounding the table.
Any further, um, gents to review? None noted?
I'll go ahead and read the recommendation, your worship, moved by Counselor Stacy White, seconded by Counselor Casey Owens. Be it resolved that council supports correspondence as attached from the township of Clearview regarding funding supports for infrastructure projects, bridge, culvert replacements in rural municipalities. And finally, that a copy of the motion be forwarded to the Honorable Doug Ford, Premier of Ontario, the Honorable Peter Bethan Falvey, Ontario Minister of Finance, the Ontario, the Honorable Chrystia Freeman, Federal Minister of Finance, the Rural Ontario Municipal Association, R O M A, the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, A M O, the Federation of Northern Ontario Municipalities, P N O M, and all Tamiscomang region municipalities.
All in favor? Motion carried. Introduction and reading and considerable bylaws.
Moved by Counselor Patrick Adams, seconded by Counselor Eugene Ivanoff. Be it resolved that the following bylaw be read a first, second, and third time, numbered past, signed by the mayor and clerk, and the seal of the corporation be affixed thereto, bylaw number twenty twenty two thirty five, being a bylaw to appoint a deputy clerk for the town of Kirkland Lake.
All in favor? Motion carried. Questions from council staff? Uh, counselors' reports? None noted? No closed session? Confirmation bylaw?
Moved by Counselor Rick Owen, seconded by Counselor Rod Chaba. Be it resolved that the following bylaw be read a first, second, and third time, numbered past, signed by the mayor and clerk, and the seal of the corporation be affixed thereto, file number twenty two thirty six, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at its meeting held at the third, twenty twenty.
All in favor? Motion carried. Motion to adjourn.
Moved by Counselor Casey Owens, seconded by Counselor Eugene Ivanoff. Be it resolved that this regular meeting of council do now adjourn at, sorry, I have to exit full screen, five twenty eight P M.
All in favor? Motion carried.